Good evening. I'd like to open the September the 27th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the town of Bethel. Our first item on the agenda is the to open the continued public hearing from our last meeting for Steiner, Inc. Map amendment for eight, nine, 10, and 17 Millbrook Road is the applicant here ready to present.
Yes, good evening. May I request that the commission conduct a joint public hearing for this matter and the next matter? Since they relate to basically the same project.
Do we have a motion tonight or can we just?
You can note for the record that both hearings will be combined.
So we'll know.
Makes it easier for us not to do the presentation twice. Good evening. My name is Peter Alson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel on 275 Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. And you're excited. We have the Steiner, Inc. and Village Square, Inc. who are the respective applicants. They're different applicants because there are different legal interests in the property. I'd like to submit for the record, the green cards from the return receipt letters that we sent out along with the list of everybody we sent it to. They didn't all come back. They did have an alternate quarter and then dropped them on the floor over there.
You could put them back in order.
Yeah. I'm going to hand out for you the summary of the proposed text amendments, which will be useful as we go through our presentation. This is in the application package if you're on Zoom. Okay, Village Square, Inc. is an affiliate of the Steiner Corporation conglomerate, Perch Industrial, represented here tonight by Greg Steiner and Chris Steiner. And maybe speaking later on to answer questions specifically regarding those projects. Village Square, Inc. is the owner of parcel land located at 29 Stony Hill Road. It's 7.6 acres and it's located in the RT6 zoning district. I put up the property survey here. So you can see the seven acres. It has substantial frontage on Route 6 all the way to the corner of Benedict Road. And then it has a parcel that's in a different ownership. It's still controlled by the same entities. And then continues back on Benedict Road, a substantial distance into the R20 zone. The RT6 zone, as you know, is a commercial zone that allows many types of commercial uses that we find out there. It also allows apartments in certain configurations, four-story buildings, et cetera. Steiner, Inc. is the owner of four small lots on Millbrook Road. And they're located here. Millbrook Road comes in here and then the last four lots on Millbrook Road. The current end of Millbrook Road is on the two adjacent lots owned by Moreno and Ritzyk. That's where the turnaround ends. But the original subdivision showed it continuing into these lots to turn around to be constructed. The lots themselves are impacted by extreme by drainage areas. And you can see all the wetland flags all the way around here, and they're essentially undevelopable as lots. Just really not a place to put a house fundamentally. So our plan for the development of this property in the front has always been some kind of a mixed commercial and residential project. But right now, we don't think it's the right time to come forward with the commercial side of the project. That would be done in the front of the property. Instead, we'd like to focus on the residential and we pursue that as a separate project with its own approvals from you without being tied to any commercial development. So in looking at the various permutations, obviously we looked at the RT6 zone. And the RT6 zone, when we talk about residential projects, allows within the first 275 feet from Route 6, apartments above commercial. And then after that 275-foot line, in conjunction with a commercial project, you could do residential units that had ground floor living space. That is, single-family homes, two-family homes, even apartment buildings, townhouses, anything that had residential on the ground floor. So that's what's allowed in the current zone. And that's allowed at a density of 10 units an acre. So with 7.6 acres, we could propose a project that had 76 apartment building apartment unit today. We don't really like that idea. What we'd rather do is a small, single-family community. That is a common interest community, so they don't have individual lots, but has a collection of single-family homes. We'd like to access that solely from Benedict Road. So it comes into a residential area rather than try to work a residential access onto Route 6. So how do we do that? Well, as you've seen me do before, we could have proposed a new zone. And that meant exactly what we were going to do. But the reality is, there's already a zone in the regulations, the Design Conservation District, that meets what we want to do with some minor tweaks. The DCD was initially adopted by the commission when I was sitting on your side of the table to deal with some litigation on Reservoir Street. And it's been used a few times since then. The fundamental issue with the DCD zone is it only applies to the R10 and the double R10. It's the only place you can do it. So the biggest change that we're going to ask for, and I'll go through these in a minute, is that the DCD be allowed to be applied to property in the RT6 zone. It'll sit as an overlay and allow residential development. The key with the DCD is that as drafted to apply to the R10 zone, it essentially allows four units per acre of land. If it were applied to the double R10, it would allow eight units. The proposed revision that we made in the RT6 zone will follow the R10 limitation. So the density limitation in the DCD would be four units an acre. And that works well for, it's a little more than that because of the way the map works with what an acre is. But that works well with the property side of the units that we want to build. So I'll talk about the text amendment after we have Greg Steiner go through the project. And we want to talk about the second bit because that's the text amendment that we're asking for tonight. The second bit is the map amendment. And we sent notice to everybody owning land within 500 feet. And so that's why everybody got green cards. But the map amendment would take the four lots, Millbrook, that are currently zoned R20, and put them in the RT6 zoning district. That way, the land area is available to us for our calculations as to density. But as I noted, they're not really buildable. So we're not going to put houses back there. I think they're going to continue to remain as drainage area for the entire area. Access will be by Benedict, not by Millbrook. So we won't be putting a road through there. The basic reason for the change is that we get to count more land area, which lets us get more units on the RT6 side. That's already obvious. But it requires that they be put in the RT6 zone in order for the DCD to then be applied on top of it. If that makes, that makes sense. So let me have Greg Steiner come and talk to you a little bit about the project that we want to do. Because we think that's the most important fit here beyond all the legal technicalities is to show you what our plan is and let that plan speak for itself.
Good evening. For the record, Greg Stein, office in Parkland. The principal, my father and uncle started this back in the 60s. My grandfather started the business. So we've had this, we actually built Millbrook. We did Old Field. We've owned this for many years. And we've always thought about how we, we'd always said, we thought this was going to be a shopping center. We looked at, we thought this is a commercial zone. So we had laid out a few different shopping centers back and forth. But now with Amazon and everything going on, there's really no major use for another big shopping center. Housing is, everybody wants to have nice houses. So what ours, after talking to Peter, quite a bit, what we'd like to propose to do to provide a small 22-unit complex that comes in off of Benedict Road. There'd be no access from Millbrook or Old Field. And then this property, like Peterson, would be combined into this unit, which would allow us then to create these units. We're looking at these houses somewhere from 1,600 square feet to 2,100 square feet. We think it'd be a really nice community for the area. It'd be a great transition zone. We'd like to remain this area that's commercial, 275 feet along the front of Stony Hill to remain commercial. And we'll have future development down the road when that's required. And then the transition zone from commercial to smaller houses. And we still own these two half acres lots that we would then propose just to build, leave them exactly where they are and do a nice, you know, some nice houses on those that would be conjunctual with the Old Field neighborhood and the Millbrook that we did.
That bit at the end, these two lots, they're not part of.
They're not part of it. I just wanted to say.
They're locked.
We do all these. And we purposely did not build on those when we did Old Field. We wanted to protect them. We actually own a house across the street for protection too, so that we have control over what's going on. We didn't really know what we were doing here until we decided to do it. So again, we would do this in complimentary. And we just think this would be a nice community to the area.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, so with our application, they submitted this proposed amendments page, which summarizes the amendments. And then I also submitted the full text of the DCD with the amendments in it. So you can look at either one. But I do want to go through them so you know exactly what we're asking for. Section 5.8 is the Design Conservation District. And in 5.8c, the language now says the DCD may only be applied for and within the R10, double R10 zoning districts. Obviously, the biggest part of our change is to ask you to allow it to be applied to the RT6 zoning district. We put in the 275-foot limitation. That comes from the RT6 district, which is the dividing line between a commercial and a residential project. So we're trying to say to you that we're still going to preserve the 275 feet in the front for a future commercial project. Residential will be behind that 275-foot line, just as is allowed in the RT6 now. 5.8g1, the section that governs density, the existing section says in the R10, it's 10,000 square feet per unit. And that worked and it's 5,000 square feet per unit. So we're adding another section. If the underlying district is the RT6 district, it's 10,000 square feet per unit. So an acre is 43,560 square feet. So it works out to about four units plus or minus plus plus per acre, 4.1, 4.2 per acre. In the dimensional standards, this is a requirement for lot coverage. And in designing the project, what we have found is that the road and the roofs and all of that add up to about 22%. And so we think that an amendment to allow 25% coverage is appropriate. Obviously, the engineering and drainage will all have to be done and we'll have to demonstrate to you that it's adequately controlled in order for you to approve the project down the road. We did consult with the town engineer, Jim Mayo, and he thought that was an appropriate number. Sewer and water, we're requiring sewer and water for this type of a project. So it doesn't go with the on the sewer and water. And then finally, when we make an application for a project under the DCD, what we are doing is applying for a map amendment to apply the DCD to the property and for a site plan approval at the same time. Those can be split and go just for the map amendment first. And if so, the requirements of the DCD are that you submit a conceptual plan to the commission as part of the request for the map amendment. So you know what the plan's going to be. And we have that requirement still in there. But in the R10 and double R10 zone, one of the possibilities as to how to develop with the DCD is to do it as a subdivision and give everybody individual lots in the DCD. And as part of that, we would, the original text required that you submit a conceptual subdivision plan to show how many lots you could get if you did a subdivision, to make sure that you weren't doing anything weird as to how you were laying out your lots if it was a strange shape, you know, a piece of property. And then you couldn't get any more units than that. Well, in the RT6 zone, we don't, we wouldn't really do a subdivision. The alternative is an apartment building. So what we're asking is that we don't have to do a conceptual subdivision plan as part of an RT6 zoning application. So those are the requirements of the request of you for the text amendments to the DCD to enable this project. Map amendment, as I noted, is just for the four lots on Millbrook. They're shaded in there. Just so you know, this line here is 100 feet from those lots. And then this line around here is 500 feet. And that was our notice requirement. We've done noticed everybody within 500 feet. Anything else? I think that's it. That's all we have for tonight. We're happy to answer any questions you have. And for your members of the.
This time we'll open it to the floor, to the public. If you have a question or a comment, please address it to the board and state your name and your address and then your questions, please.
Hi, my name is Austin. So I'm Rob DeBacher. I live at 6 Old Field Drive. The back of my property, about one of the two R20 lots that Greg and Steiner's own. So my, my question would be if the four lots on Millbrook are mostly unbuildable and it's going to be used, or it's just wetlands, it's going to be used for drainage. I think you said something about you need, you want to change it to the RT6 zone so that you can improve the density requirements or the, I guess, get more, get more units in or something like that. But the real concern I would have would be it's mostly unbuildable. Does that mean it's never unbuildable? Can you develop it at some point when you figure out how to get it dry? Because we know that you could do drainage. You know, people build things on swamps, so.
Would you prefer I answer one by one or all together?
Typically, we do it all together if it's more convenient and easier.
Maybe. I guess one by one, one by one, because then we won't forget. So yes, the, the four lots together add up to about two acres of land.
Right.
And by adding that two acres into the RT6 and merging it with the rest of the parcel at four units an acre, that gets us an additional eight units in the project.
Right.
They'll be located, you know, off of those lots. That's why we're doing it, obviously. In terms of can it be developed? They can't be developed as individual lots for homes because there's just no room on it. There are little pieces, like the wetlands only goes around here. So I guess you could say, well, something could go here. But it's never going to be a house or a barn or, you know, anything like that. The only thing that will end up going here is drainage structures to help with drainage from the rest of the project. So it's, we can't say there's no construction ever going to happen on those double spaces, but.
Yeah, I think it could still be more, more, you understand.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you know, it's a bunch of sledgehammer property, right?
No, we would like to really come in with a plan that I showed before. That was kind of our whole, yeah. That's another whole phase agenda. But we spent a lot of time coming up kind of this plan to get this kind of a U-shape and again, to use this area for not to be ever, not to, you know, the lawyer word is develop. And our word develop means probably put a house there. But legally, say, well, if you put a pipe in there, then you're developing.
Yeah, yeah, no, you, I think you know what I mean.
That's why we don't ever accept, see any kind of access coming through the road to the stairs. And, you know, we wanted to keep everything this side of the area toward the commercial. It didn't affect.
So listen, while I'm still here, I have a couple more questions if you don't mind. So on the, on the two R20 lots that are not part of this discussion, what's to stop you from seeking the same change in the future so that you can put, instead of what's designated now for two homes that buy, you know, my, my property and Geralamo's property and put, say, eight homes in there? Because I don't think that would be appropriate.
No, I think our good word to say I, we will not do that. And the other item that we, when we come to town, if we get approvals, this is going to be like a kind of name association. Is that the right word? And once you develop that, you can't add to or deduct to it. So this is going to be it. And we didn't, we purposely wanted to keep these just as the remaining single-family homes.
Perfect. So I mean, eventually.
They were, when we, as we develop this shore, then build.
That's, that makes sense. The last thing would be the access on Benedict.
Yeah.
So 22 units. As you all know, that intersection is a disaster as it is because it's not aligned. It's, you know, it should be aligned, you know, so going into Payne Road, you know, right now, just to, you know, to make a left. I'm sorry, is it six, but it pains the other side.
Bell.
A bell, right. If, you know, you get in that lane, you want to make a left turn, it's five minutes today. And that's at five o'clock in the morning when my wife's going to check. So with 22 cars in and out, well, it could be more than 22, it could be 44, right? You guys have plans to fix that intersection for the town, somebody.
Not as part of this application and this development.
So that should be considered, I think.
We suspect when we deal with the commercial side, there will be some encouragement on one of those ones.
So who would need to be encouraged?
Well, we don't know yet. We'd like somebody else to do it. That's obviously the goal.
Yeah.
Route 6 is a state road.
Yeah, Route 6 is a state highway.
So, so the, I guess, the other question.
The state enjoys making other people do their work for them as well.
When do you see the commercial side being developed? Because if it's five years from now, now we got another.
We don't know. Is the answer. It's right now, the economic conditions aren't in a position for us to justify a commercial shopping center, right?
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Well, and it could be, I mean, yeah, it could be a commercial use, could be a restaurant.
Yeah.
I have one question. I'm Jean DeBacher. I live at 6 Old Field Drive. Will the water, what water source will this property draw on? Like, will it affect the water pressure that we?
It's aquarium, right?
It's aquarium, yes.
It's so it'll be.
It's aquarium water. So it's public water. It shouldn't have any impact.
My name is Harold Christensen. I live on Bud Drive on the corner of Bud and Millbrook. Just a question on 22 units. What is, if you're, if you're including the four units as part of the overall plan, what is the, the, the number of units per acre that will be on just the, just the space of the 22 units?
So the proposed amendment to the DCD requires 10,000 square feet of land area per lot, per unit.
Per unit.
So an acre is 43,560. So that's a little bit more than four units per acre.
Not including, not including the four lots, right?
Well, I'm about to do that now. There's about five point something acres on this parcel. And then we're adding two more acres. So we end up with, Chris has done the math more than I have, but we end up with mid twenties for number of units that are allowed. We run up against the lot coverage problem. And that's that you can't pave the whole lot. You can't put roofs over the whole lot. It requires green space. And so.
Just explain coverage. I don't know if they are so.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to explain. So coverage is hard surfaces, roads, sidewalks, roofs, pools, believe it or not. And so we start to run up against that upper limit of coverage. And that makes it more difficult to add more houses. And in addition, when we start to look at adding more houses, as you can see the layout and the shape of the lot, it gets very crowded. And squeezing in one or two more houses gets very, very difficult.
I'm not proposing you squeeze in anymore.
So I'm saying that's how we end up at 22.
What's that?
And that's how we end up at 22. Now, when we do our full, our full drainage and engineering calculations, maybe it's 21, maybe it's 23, but that's how we.
On five acres, you said?
On seven acres.
Seven acres, including the two?
Yes.
But if you take those two out, what is it?
It's five point something.
Five, okay. And 22 houses on five.
Yeah.
But we would plan on combining that whole. So there'll be one condominium unit or one parcel that would incorporate this entire lot. So these two will kind of become part of this, of this, this is the town road now, but never built. But this will be the outline of this entire seven acre parcel, which will then be overseen by a condominium association.
What do you mean by condominium association?
So there's a, I mean, everybody knows the word condo, right? Connotation. But it's actually called a common interest community. And that can be anything. We have common interest communities in Francis Clark Park that are industrial. So it essentially means that you own your house and the grounds around it are owned in common with all your neighbors. And they're managed by an association.
Can I ask another?
Well, we usually let other people go first.
We let other people, well, on the first round, after everybody's done, there's a few other people with questions.
Hi, Allison St. Drean, 14 Elgin Ave, Bethel. Two questions. So firstly, the map amendment for those two acres to be added in. So is there another plan that if for some reason that doesn't get approved, so would that be editable? So you obviously have to come down to density, not have the 22. And the other question is, what are all of the, the buildings, all the residences, the same size? Like, how many bedrooms? Do they have garages below beside? Are they just driveways? And then are they, as we're looking at them, are you going to be looking at the backs of them as you're, you know, coming along? Right now, that'll be empty along Route 6. So it'll be like, kind of like what we have down on Plumtree. So you see the backs of the buildings. And so will there be anything that along Benedict or of the other budding neighbors shielding or screening the properties?
So a lot of those details are still being worked on. If the commission approves these applications, we still have to come back with a fully designed project. And we'll have our calculations and all that. And yes, the screening and all that is future, unfortunately. We don't, we tend not to spend all the money to develop those plans until we know we can actually do it. But Greg, can you talk a little bit about what you're thinking in terms of what those options are going to be?
Right. We were thinking then three bedrooms, one car garage, and then possibly three bedroom with two car garage with a bedroom on the lower level. Kind of split half and half. So again, 15, 1600 square feet to maybe 2,000, 2,100 square feet, depending on. Again, because of the coverage and the size of the lots, we still would like to, we still have some time to develop. We've been working on these house plans for quite a while. We keep looking at different items, but we really don't want to spend it until we knew we could at least get to this next level. But I can assure you, we'll be looking at a nice job of planting along here. We'd like to buffer it. We want to make this a nice community that everybody is proud of, definitely, that we want to move ourselves.
And then if we hope it doesn't happen, obviously, when the commission didn't approve the map amendment, that really doesn't have a huge impact on the number of units that would be allowed. What it does have an impact on is the coverage, because then we have less land area and the coverage percentage goes up. So we probably end up, if we pursued the same project, then I don't know if we would at that point with, with a few less years as a result.
My name's Maryam. I'll give them Millbrook Road right at the end of the circle. Is Maryam your last name again? Ritzyk. Thank you. My, my issue bringing up is the drainage problem. We have a drainage problem going into, when it overrains, the sun pumps and everything just backs up into the house and our basements get flooded. It's been a non-stop pump for a while. And having all these houses coming into there, what can be done to improve so that it doesn't add? No problem.
Greg, when was Millbrook developed?
Two thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right.
So what will have to happen is we'll have to submit to the commission a complete set of engineered drawings. And we'll have to demonstrate that we're handling any stormwater runoff from the entire property in an appropriate way. At the retention and retention is sized appropriately. So from our side, we can almost certainly assure you that we'll not exacerbate the problem and we'll probably make it better. I can't speak as to what comes from the other side. Those are town roads that are, that the drainage is just rolling right in there. So I, I, we have no control over that side. But from our side, we won't make the problem worse.
No, no, because what we have now, it's a problem. So that was my concern tapping into it and draining into those four houses on the block so that it doesn't back up. We have an issue. All the houses, all four of the houses have a problem with that.
Questions?
You're doing a great, a grand street. Is this going to be a town road or is that why you need to have the condominium association?
It will be a private road within the property. So it won't be a town road. The condominium association will have to plow it and take care of it.
Your questions here. Any questions on the Zoom?
I will reach out to those that are on the Zoom platform. For those that have not attended or for those who have attended Zoomies before, the process is the same. You raise your hand. But for those who are not familiar with Zoom or offering public comment, what you would do is go to the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app. There is a reactions icon. You would click on that reactions icon. There's a button for you to do what's called raise your hand. Raising a hand is. Raising a hand establishes a cue for us to accept public comment. If you're unable to raise your hand, you can always, if you have, if you if you're if you also have a video connection into Zoom, you can also raise your hand on your screen. Either way, let's just know that you have public comments to offer. Mr. Chairman, I'm seeing a Paul Russo.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Much like the Rizniks, I live on Millbrook, three Millbrook. And the the issue with the drainage, again, it has been an issue since I moved in about eleven years ago. And I know that they've tried to work on it in the last few years, but it's always been an issue. I know that their their plans for this this property, they're going to do what they need to make sure the drainage is good for that. But there should be some stipulation that while they're doing the work, there there's no backup coming from whatever work they're doing.
Thank you.
And your name and address again, sir, please?
Paul Russo, and it's three Millbrook Road.
Thank you.
Any other hands on Zoom?
I am not seeing any at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, thanks. So in going back to the twenty-two units, Greg, will any of the units be designated as low income or affordable housing is at stake?
You know the questions, commission?
The, are these units going to be for sale or for rent?
For sale.
For sale. Okay. Is there, and this may be a question more than Beth. Is there a way to deed the, deeds is the right word, the Millbrook, those four lots, open space?
We still have to go through the application process. And during the application process, the open space component will come up.
Okay. Yeah, one thing that's important in that regard is when you when you create a common interest community, you designate units and you designate land.
Yeah.
And so whether it's open space that's owned by a land trust or a conservation easement or just owned by the association. If there's no right to add units to it, which I would have to put into your declaration, it's by definition, open space.
I think.
Maybe not capital O, capital S.
Yeah, yeah. I think it would be important to keep those four.
It'll be evident from the plan.
I think it would it would probably make some of the public sleep easier, knowing those four are unbuildable.
It'll be evident from the plans if that's the case. It'll be evident from the plans if that's the case. Again, you know, Greg and I, he says development means you can't put a house on there. But I look at it and say, well, it may be that we had pipes running into those drainage stakes and that's quote development unquote. So we won't know that.
Show those in the ground that's been developed.
Yeah. We won't know that till it's been fully designed.
Okay. I'm sure all the questions will be resolved. That's it for now. Any commission members on Zoom have any questions for the applicant?
What was the answer to affordability aspect of this project?
There's no requirement for affordability in the DCD, and so we have no intention of providing any affordable units.
We put that in there.
In the DCD, you are entitled to an affordability, a density bonus if you provided affordable units. That's how that's written. So we're not asking for any kind of a density bonus. Obviously, our our problem is the coverage, not the density. So we have no need to ask for that bonus and no need for the affordable units.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else from the commission on Zoom, a question?
No questions?
No questions.
So at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Will you be deliberating tonight or next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the committee on our last meeting. To review, do we have a motion to accept? Last, I'm seconded by Doug. Thank you very much.
As far as I know, we do not have.
Did you, did you vote on that motion, sir?
I need a vote on the motion to accept the minutes. All in favor? Any against? Bob was good and Penny were good?
Good.
I I'm good. I have to, I wasn't there.
And Rob Wallace, too, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. So moved, we accept the minutes from the last meeting. And no invoices?
No invoices.
Next item on the agenda. Commission initiated amendments and adoption, I think it is Saunders, site plan to the overlay zone, thirty-one bedroom units, seventeen Good Hill Road.
Session that does include the mission initiated.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, you did say that. So last meeting, you had the hearing on your amendments that you wanted to make regarding height, density of the six zone and opting out of some of the state statutes that were proposed last year during legislative session. I just need you to make a motion to adopt those where those changes to your regulations with an effective date of October first.
I move that we adopt those changes effective October first, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Don't move.
Onto the next item. Do you want me to review this with you a little bit? In in discussions with the chair of the commission and taking into consideration the comments made by the commission members, both to me personally and as a group. The proposal is to deny the application without prejudice. This means that the applicant can come back with an amended plan after reviewing the decision. There'd be no application fees that are charged. I don't think you guys are, some of you are newer, so you're not familiar with that process when waived by the commission. And you cited the two regulations under the TOD regulations in regards to the denial. But besides that part, because you did discuss that, I believe Katie Grant was the one that brought it up. The the majority of the application was really dealing with the mass and scale of the building itself, not actually taking the property and developing it. So some of your comments were incorporated in this as far as concepts and ideas for them to explore. The interesting one was when you get down to trying to find samples in the residential zone, realizing that the TOD can allow denser units, those type of samples that I could at least refer to. One of them you mentioned to me, and then it triggered the other one. And those were the end results, what started with two of your eight thirty G applications, six Cindy Lane and nine Good Hill Road, and then how they ended up. So also, you know, there would, it's just you, you've had time to look at this. And if you have any comments in regards to this, please, let's add them in now so I can finalize this for your next meeting.
Looks good. I like what you got.
Yes, thank you. Any input?
The second one on my phone, it's National Road extension, not Nashville Road.
Comments, any?
I like it.
I think it captures the.
Comments from the commission on Zoom?
I have a couple of comments. I I'm not sure, you know, how solid a case we would have if we denied this thing. Number one, because it does meet the TOD. We put the TOD in that area. We didn't, he's not asking to be put that, we put it in there. And so I I I think we have to be very careful to of denying something that that meets the regulations as they stand right now. Whether you like them or not, that's what the regulation is.
I I think, Bob, not to be argumentative, it doesn't meet the regulations as quoted in the draft.
He's done everything we've asked him to do as far as as that goes. And and draft says it doesn't meet the regulations, but I don't, I don't know. You could prove that in court.
One of the things that's quoted in the draft is the size of the building, which exceeds what is in the appointments and requirements.
Wasn't that a recommendation to 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 move the thing further back?
That has to do with the size of the building.
The size of the building came out of a recommendation by us, I thought. To keep it further away from the roadway.
I don't recall that bombing.
I I I just would be very careful to deny this thing.
Bob, it's Penny over here. And while I think you make a very good point about caution, I also think that we have a responsibility to be cautious even within the TOD regulations. And simply because something meets the black letter law does not mean that we have to approve it. That's it. That's all I got.
And at what point, if 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 we wanted a hundred foot as opposed to a hundred and twenty feet, at what point do we get that hundred foot? If he splits it down into smaller buildings and, you know, goes back to where, you know, they wanted to do in the first place.
Okay, Bob, in in looking at the resolution, there are several alternatives for them to look at. It's an encouragement for them to come back to the commission and try to work something out that is compatible with the regulations and with the surrounding area and also benefits them for whatever they wish to do there. So we don't, so we don't duplicate what we've just been through. I I I think it's an opportunity for all of us to try to work together.
That's good. I I I plan to work together with this thing, but my my other point is, you know, we put TOD in for a purpose. And whether people, you know, just because people don't like change, not negate the TOD.
Robert, again, with all, with a lot of respect. Again, I think that there is a difference between intent and practicality. I don't think anybody, based on Beth's really well-worded motion for us to take a look at. I think that we are giving the developer some opportunities to come back and be part of the community. So I don't think it's a matter of not liking. It's a matter of perspective. It's a matter of, and not just perspective, it's a matter of physicality and appearance and being part of the neighborhood.
I think it could be a part of the neighborhood and and transition that back to residential usage as opposed to what it is right now, which is a good thing.
Agreed. And that is why I think that Beth's suggestion of inviting the developer to come back with something that is more in line with the neighborhood and the needs of that neighborhood, I think that makes a lot of sense. So I agree with you.
The previous application we just listened to is a classic example of a really responsible builder and property owner. And what he proposed was absolutely reasonable, and it's going to be a good-looking process. This is not going to be reasonable, and it's not going to be a good-looking property when, as proposed. And what's the point of us being here unless we can voice our opinions and alter their changes? That's how I see it.
Is, are there any other comments from the commission that you can take away for this evening? And I'd so note what you all said. And go on to, I have the final motion prepared and ready for you at your next meeting.
Okay, next item, NK Homes LLC, six A Francis Clark Circle, revise site plan.
We are finalizing the engineering aspects of the site plan, and it should be available, it'll be in its final version for you to review at the next meeting. Yes.
New business?
I'm sorry. I was talking outside.
Is the applicant here for?
No, new business. We have project timing, which is nine and eleven Diamond Avenue. We're just, all we're doing this evening is scheduling it for acceptance. The application's complete at this point. It's the industrial zones to the TOD overlay. And I believe that when we spoke today, we were discussing it most scheduled.
November twenty-second.
November twenty-second. We'll schedule it for now, see how it is. It comes, right, you can zoom. I'm sorry, we're just discussing this. He's going to be out of town.
They have the internet in Minnesota last night.
No, he's going, he's either Michigan.
One of those M states.
Michigan, yeah, both Ms. Have it. But anyway, so schedule it for November twenty-second. That would be the public hearing where any testimony relating to any discussions or questions about Diamond Avenue, I think some people are here in regards to Diamond Avenue this evening. If you have questions or comments from here on in, now there's an application in place. We can't accept them at this time. There'll be a public hearing. It'll probably be here, in the same way, the back door. Some of you will get notice if you're within a certain amount of feet of the project. If you have questions, I encourage you to call the office. And we'll try to answer questions and and give you direction as to where the meeting is going to be, if it's going to be here, if we're going to have to do it down front as we go forward. But it'll be a while before we know exactly where it's going to be, that they normally are here. Okay? That's it. Yes, please make a motion to accept the application, schedule a public hearing for November twenty-second, December twenty-second. No, wouldn't I? He's best.
I I believe, I believe the date you have on the agenda, Beth, is December first.
That's the expiration date of the first sixty-five days of the application.
Okay.
Make a motion and accept the application and schedule a public hearing for November the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Second. Project diamonds. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Just for public notice, public hearing schedule?
No, that's all next month. It's all garages in the front yards for people. There's a right that says the good. No, that's all next month, it's all garages in the front yards, we're capable, there's a right, that's just the guy. Okay, so I have no bond releases, I have no planner to report this evening. Your next item might think is commission comments.
I have nothing, comments from the commission? Anybody on commission comments?
I have a comment that I'd like to make. I apologize for not being here, whatever it was, two Tuesday evenings ago. I, my family had a medical emergency up in Boston and I was not able to get online or anything like that. I just want to have it noted that I would have voted no to the Cindy Lane project. That's it.
Thank you, so noted.
Any further public input before we close?
Allison Sainte Trane, fourteen Elgin Ave. I listened in on Zoom and I was asking, I appreciate Beth's overview of the development downtown. So if the commission decides to want to engage with citizens and have input and if you're looking for that type of thing, that would be wonderful and we have tapped in as a neighborhood and, and beyond to a lot of different opinions and voices. And so when, if you're ready for those kind of comments and thoughts, I think there's a whole crowd of people and I'd be very much happy to, to be able to pass along some of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? All right then, I know the motion's closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, bye.